Okay, are we, there we are. Okay. Good evening. Welcome to the April 19th, 2022 Glendale City Council Meeting being called to order at 6:07 PM. Meetings are broadcast live on Glendale TV, viewable on Spectrum Cable, Channel 6, and AT&amp;T U-verse, Channel 99. Meetings are also streamed live in high-definition on the city's webpage, glendaleca.gov/live, on youtube.com/miglendale, and on Apple TV, Roku, and Amazon Fire devices, using a free app called ScreenWeave and choosing Glendale TV from the menu. For public comments and questions during the meeting, call 818-937-8100. Public comments on a specific agenda item will be taken when that agenda item is discussed. We do have all of our council members here, with the exception of Councilmember Najarian, who is not in chambers but is joining us from a remote location. So, may I please have the roll call?
Councilmember Agajanian.
President.
Brotman.
Here.
Devine.
Here.
Najarian.
Here.
And Mayor Kassakian.
Here. Thank you very much. May we have the flag salute, which will be given to us, or Councilmember Brotman will lead us in the flag salute, and then I ask you to remain standing for the invocation.
Place your right hand over your heart and repeat after me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for tonight's invocation. Tonight, as we reflect upon the month of remembrance, let us take a moment to reflect upon all the events that take place outside these chambers, which touched the lives of many of our residents and stakeholders in Glendale and throughout our great nation. Let us pray for the innocent families who suffered wherever war wages on earth. Let us pray for those who have lost loved ones to senseless and random acts of gun violence. Let us pray for the memory of millions of innocent lives that were lost over 100 years ago during the Armenian genocide. May their souls find peace and their descendants find justice. Let us pray for those who work hard to raise awareness about human rights violations to end the city's cycle of murder. May those who fight against these injustices be blessed in their righteous cause. We pray for peace and harmony amongst all people of the world tonight and forever. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. And may we have your report.
The agenda for the April 19th, 2022 regular meeting of the Glendale City Council was posted on April 12th, 2022 on the bulletin board outside City Hall.
Thank you. And next?
Next would be presentations and appointments. The regular housing authority and the city council meeting for April 26, 2022 have been canceled. The next regular meetings are scheduled for Tuesday, May 3rd, 2022.
Thank you. Can you please read Item 3B into the record?
3B would be a proclamation, April 2022 as Sexual Assault Awareness Month.
All right. Mr. Glon, did you want to also give a preview of when we will start our, before we go to this presentation, our budget study sessions?
Yes, thank you. Mr. Mayor, Member City Council, our first budget study session will be April 26th, next Tuesday, in the morning, starting at 9 o'clock. We plan on having seven budget study sessions that will take us until, if everything goes well, tentatively planning to have the hearing for the final budget, proposed budget, and adoption, if council chooses to do so, on June 17th.
All right. Excellent. Thank you. So, as was read into the record, 3B is a proclamation designating April 2022 as Sexual Assault Awareness Month, and here to receive that is Ms. Arminet Perian, who is the chairperson of the Commission on the Status of Women for the City of Glendale. Welcome to the council chambers, and thank you for joining us. Allow me to read this first, and then I will ask you to say a few words. No, you please. Well, you're welcome. I'll read fast. So, it reads, "Whereas the United States government has declared April as Sexual Assault Awareness Month, whereas on Denim Day, April 27th, 2022, millions of people across the world will wear jeans with a purpose, support survivors, and educate themselves and others about all forms of sexual violence. And whereas rape, sexual assault, and sexual harassment harm our community, and statistics show that one in five women and one in 67 men have experienced rape or attempted rape sometime in their lives. Child sexual abuse prevention must be a priority to confront the reality that one in four girls and one in six boys will experience a sexual assault before age 18. And whereas with proper education, there is compelling evidence that we can successfully reduce the incidence of this physically and psychologically damaging crime. And whereas Sexual Assault Awareness Month and Denim Day are intended to draw attention to the fact that rape and sexual assault are serious issues in our society, we're instituted to call, we are, we're instituted to call attention to misconceptions and misinformation about rape and sexual assault, and the problem that many in society remain disturbingly uninformed with respect to issues of assault and rape, allowing these crimes to persist and victim survivors to be revictimized. And whereas prevention is possible when everyone gets involved to increase education awareness and community involvement, to take action to create a safe environment for all, and whereas the members of the Glendale City Council strongly support the efforts of the City of Glendale Commission on the Status of Women to educate people in our community about the true impact of rape and sexual assault and what can be done to prevent it. Now therefore I, Ardi Kassakian, Mayor of the City of Glendale, hereby proclaim the month of April 2022 as Sexual Assault Awareness Month and designate April 27, 2022 as Denim Day in Glendale, and urge everyone to wear jeans on April 27 to spread the message that there is no excuse and never an invitation to rape. Signed on this day by myself, Mayor, and presented to Ms. Arminet Perian to raise awareness about this issue." I'm going to ask a former commissioner and former mayor, Paula Devine, to present this to you. Yes, please.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Kassakian, council members and staff. My name is Arminet Perian, Chair of the Commission on the Status of Women. On behalf of the CSW, I would like to thank you for this proclamation. Sexual Assault Awareness Month is a time for us to reflect on how sexual assault affects every part of our community, and we need to be able to talk about what is going on if we are going to take actions to stop it. Over the past few years, the Me Too movement has given more survivors the strength to find their voice and speak out against perpetrators. By finally calling them out, they can hopefully be stopped. I want to take this time to ask city council and the community to join the commission in wearing denim on Denim Day, which will be on Wednesday, April 27th of this year. Denim Day came about over 20 years ago as a result of the protests in response to a rape conviction that was overturned simply because the victim wore tight jeans. The women of the Italian Parliament wore jeans in protest, and this movement spread to Los Angeles region through Peace Over Violence, a nonprofit violence prevention organization that the commission has supported. Please wear denim on April 27th to make a social statement and protest against the misconceptions that surround sexual violence. Anyone interested can visit denimdayinfo.org to learn more and take the pledge. Thank you again for this important and symbolic recognition.
Thank you. Would any of my colleagues like to say a few words? Thank you very much, Ms. Perian. I know normally, these are happy occasions, we will applaud and celebrate something. Here, we're just drawing attention to a very important issue, and we appreciate you and the work that you're doing with your colleagues on the Commission on the Status of Women for raising awareness about this issue and the continued problem that unfortunately we see happening in regards to domestic violence. Thank you. Mr. Clerk, what is the next item? We have another important proclamation?
Yes. Item C is Armenian Genocide Commemoration Proclamation.
Thank you. And if I can ask the representatives of the Armenian National Committee, Armenian Council of America, and the Armenian Rights Council of America to approach the podium for it to So, as I think everyone who lives in Glendale is now aware, since so much progress has been made to educate our friends and neighbors about this important historical event, one of the darkest chapters in human history, the Armenian genocide, we have made significant progress in not only raising awareness, but having events that commemorate this tragedy, including on April 24th, the City of Glendale's annual genocide anniversary commemoration event will return to the Alex Theater at 7:00 PM in cooperation with Lark Music Society. But this event and all of the work around educating the community cannot be done without the work of your organizations. Each of your organizations has its roots in some of the oldest Armenian community organizations, political organizations, with roots going all the way back to Western Armenia, and we appreciate the continued work that you continue, that you are doing 100 years later. So, allow me to read this proclamation, and then I will give an opportunity for each of you to say a few words on behalf of your organization that you represent. So, the proclamation reads as follows. Whereas April is observed as Genocide Awareness Month because it is associated with many significant dates related to genocide, including the Armenian genocide, which began on April 24th, 1915. The Holocaust, the Warsaw Ghetto uprising began on April 19, 1943. The Cambodian genocide, which began on April 19, 1975, and the 1994 genocide against the Tutsi in Rwanda, which began on April 7, 1994. And whereas in the observation and acknowledgement of Genocide Awareness Month, we must also pause to think of those who are currently under attack and those being persecuted for their identity. And whereas the City of Glendale believes that cultural diversity is achieved when our entire community acknowledges that its wholeness is based on the unique strengths of each of its community members, and that we can no longer innocently harbor feelings of superiority and separatism in our society. And whereas Glendale is home to one of the largest Armenian-American populations per capita in the diaspora, and Armenians living in Glendale have enriched our city through their leadership and in contribution in business, academia, government, and the arts, many of whom have family members who were affected by the horror and evil of the Armenian genocide and its ongoing denial. And whereas every person should be made aware and educated about the Armenian genocide and other genocides and crimes against humanity. And whereas we appreciate the efforts of the community volunteers in organizing the City of Glendale's annual Armenian genocide commemorative event, and whereas we encourage the community to support and actively participate in the annual events of the commemoration and remembrance, and to increase their efforts to educate our community not only about the Armenian genocide, but all acts of violence and inhumanity. And whereas April 24th, 1915 is globally observed and recognized as the commencement of the Armenian genocide. And then now therefore I, Ardash Shesar迪Kassakian, Mayor of the City of Glendale and great-grandson of genocide survivors, proclaim the month of April 2022 as Genocide Awareness Month, and April 24th, 2022 as a day of commemoration of the 107th anniversary of the Armenian genocide, and invite all members of the community to participate in activities and events in recognition of the genocide. Signed on this date by myself, the mayor, and we have three copies of this proclamation, one for each of your organizations. I'll allow you to say a few words, and then I'll ask my colleagues to come down and present
Mayor Kassakian, council members?
Will you also state your name? I know we have with us Lucy Petrosian, we have Krikor Maloyan, David Samwalian, and Herant Vartsbadyan.
Mayor Kassakian, council members and city staff. My name is Lucy Petrosian, and I am the chairperson of the ANC Glendale, and I'd like to thank you for the Armenian Genocide Commemoration Proclamation. As the leaders of one of the most Armenian-populated cities in the United States, it is important to acknowledge the atrocities that affected so many of Glendale's residents and their families. Thank you for standing up for human rights, justice, and the truth. Thank you again.
My name is Krikor Maloyan. I'm a board member of the Armenian Council of America Glendale Chapter, and on behalf of the Armenian Council, I'd like to give my thanks to the City of Glendale for always taking a firm stand and upholding truth and human rights and justice, in particular when it comes to issues of the Armenian genocide and the Armenian people. I'd like to bring attention to the numerous ethnic minorities across the globe who are being persecuted and ethically cleansed, and every single genocide which is denied or gone unrecognized continues to perpetuate the same cycle of genocide and afford other regimes to continue that persecution. In particular, I'd like to point out, the ethnic Armenians living in the Republic of Artsakh today are being ethically cleansed and persecuted by the Azerwajani regime, and had we perhaps, as a, as an American community as a whole, recognized the Armenian genocide decades ago and continued to seek that level of truth and justice, perhaps the continued ethnic cleansing of Armenians may have been stemmed at the root. But hopefully, we may see that day come yet again. Nevertheless, thank you so much, the City of Glendale. We really appreciate your support. Thank you.
Hi, my name is David Samwalian, and I represent ADLP, Armenian Democratic Liberal Party, Ramgavar, and we also represent the Armenian Rights Council of Los Alamos, United I'm very thankful for this proclamation. We are so moved by this proclamation. Other than that, we have to congratulate our dear mayor, Mr. Kassakian, and councilmen, and your dear colleagues. Thank you for all this that you guys have been offering for the Armenian genocide. And other than that, this year is going to be celebration of the 100th anniversary of the Ramgavar Party, the ADLP, and plus the weekly paper, Nol Or, which is New Day, was founded in Fresno 100 years ago. May 22nd, we're celebrating the 100th anniversary of our organization, and on October 5th, we are celebrating the weekly Nol Or's 100th anniversary. Other than that, I represent the uacla.com chairman of the Armenian genocide group that we are, we have 40, 40 organizations that participate, uacla. You guys go with your website, uacla.com, and you find all our history. And I've been the chairman for the last 12 years, and we're doing our commemorations for the last 12 years at Montebello's, that beautiful 57-year-old monument. So, I'm really thankful, and we are really continuing for our genocide purposes that have been done, and we are really working hard for that. And we are very thankful for Glendale City that is really adopting this genocide issue. We are so, thank you very, very much. God bless you, and we'll be continuing following the genocide. Thank you.
Thank you, and don't go far, because Councilmembers Agajanian, Devine, and Brotman will come down to present each of you with a copy of the proclamation. Would any of you like to say a few words before you present it?
I would. Probably you all know that I am of Ukrainian descent, and I feel that there is a genocide going on right, right before our very eyes, and so I have always supported the Armenian community, and I will support you. Accountability is very important, and I think that's what we need to strive for, is accountability. And again, we shall never forget, we shall never forget, 1,000 years from now, we shall
Yeah, I'll just, I'll just add that it is, it is tragic, you know, what's going on in the Ukraine, and it's gotten a lot of attention, but there are many ongoing situations of genocide and crimes against humanity that don't get this level of attention, including, of course, what's happening today still in Artsakh, what's happening in Western China with the Uighurs, what's happening in Myanmar with the Rohingya, and it's, it's just a tragedy of human history that this, this seems to just continue, and I guess what we can do is call it out as loudly as possible and continue to condemn, condemn these acts and hold the perpetrators accountable, even if they're long gone in the, in the, the distance of history, but we still need to hold them accountable again and again.
Thank you. If we want to talk about Armenian genocide, we can talk forever, but however, I just want to bring, just mention one sentence, that dictator Adolf Hitler, at the conclusion of the Oberstalsberg speech in 1939, before anything was arranged for Holocaust, he said to his generals, "Who after all speaks today of the annihilation of the Armenians?" And that says it all in 1939, but apparently, probably nobody knew what he's talking about, that he's organizing the Holocaust. So, I'm sorry to say that one and a half million Armenians, they have been killed for no reason. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Najarian, I know that you're with us remotely. Is there anything that you would like to add?
No, I'd like to go off Councilmember Agajanian's remarks, and who after all today speaks of the genocide of the Artsakh Armenians only two years ago. No one was speaking about it, and again, history repeats itself in the most vile of ways. Thank you to the members of the organizations for being present, and everyone in the community who's commemorating this tragic event in our history.
Truly, thank you very much, and thank you to you all for continuing to fight for justice and justice deferred. I'll now allow my colleagues to join you down there, and I'll come down quickly as well, for anyone who wishes to take a few photos for posterity. I'd now like to invite to the podium Savanna Zadorian, who is a member of our Arts and Culture Commission, but she's also the co-chair of this year's annual commemorative, annual Armenian genocide commemorative event to be held at the Alex.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I am here as an Arts and Culture Commissioner and as the co-chair of the Armenian Genocide Commemorative Committee. I am here to tell you that, of course, we've discussed, the theme of the year is the music of Omidas. We hope that it will inspire, haunt, and undoubtedly evoke an array of emotions in those who attend this event. We will have the opportunity to showcase the work of a musical genius and the various talented artists who will perform during our evening of remembrance, and thanks to the award-winning Lark Musical Society for that. I accept all these proclamations to share with our fellow Armenian cultural organizations within Glendale that have not only added to the vibrancy but diversity of our community, as well as my fellow co-chair, Mayor Kassakian, and the rest of our committee members, including Christine Agachani, Armik Avetisyan, Hasmik Burushyan, Arlet Dehovanesyan, Tolin Manukyan, Ara Oshagan, Christine Powers, David Samwalian, Andy Torosyan, Patrick Veron, Miles Williams, and Nora Yakubyan, as well as Dean Lopez, our graphic designer at the City of Glendale, who did a wonderful job on the flyer. Tickets are available, they are free. You can get them at itsmyseat.com/april24. The QR code is available on the flyer, which is currently presented on the screen, and there's a limit to four tickets per transaction, and there is assigned seating. So, we hope all will attend, and we thank you very much, as always. So we hope all will attend, and we thank you very much, as always, and to the Alex Theater, of course.
Thank you, Ms. Zadorian. Thank you for joining us. Thank you, committee member Avadisian, who's also joining us. And again, when you see that QR code on the flyer, let's put that flyer up. You can actually scan the code from the television screen, and you can pull up itsmysit.com site to reserve your tickets. And for those who may be wondering what that photo is, that is the priest Gomitas, who's the father of ethnomusicology. He spent his life documenting the traditional songs and music of the Armenian people. He was one of the intellectuals arrested on the evening of April 24th. This painting depicts him on the evening of that arrest, hearing the knock on the door. He was taken away by authorities. Somehow, he was one of a few, just barely a handful, who escaped execution. But he was driven to insanity and spent the remainder of his days in a psychiatric institution in Paris, France, after the horrors of the genocide. So we hope that you will join us for this concert put on by Lark Musical Society. And thank you, Ms. Zadorian, and all the members of the committee for putting this together in a short period of time, our first in-person commemorative event after two years of absence from COVID. And thank you to my colleagues for their support of this as well. Thank you. With that, let us move on with the rest of the balance of the items before us. What is next, Mr. Clerk?
Next item would be consent items, including minutes that are following our routine and may be acted upon by one motion. Any member of council or audience requesting separate consideration may do so by making such requests before motion is proposed.
May I move consent items?
Before we do, there is one, I think, request to pull an item.
I think it's item 4B.
With the exception of 4B, would you like to move the balance?
Yes, I would like to move 4A, 4C, 4D.
Thank you. And is there a second?
No second.
Thank you. May we have roll call?
Councilmember Agajanian?
Yes.
Brotman?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
And Mayor Kasakin?
Yes. May we have the item 4B read into the record?
Public works regarding city of Glendale measure R subregional program update, one motion approving additional programming, modifications to existing programming and funding changes that adopted measure R subregional program.
Mr. Member City Council, I'm going to ask Yazdan Emrani, our Director of Public Works, to, I believe, introduce this item. And we also have Sarkis Organisian, our acting deputy director of public works and city engineer, who will do the bulk of the presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Galanian. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of city council. As you know, Measure R is one of the sources of funding that we receive from Metro for enhancing our streets and our overall transportation and mobility. We have a short presentation for you that describes the overall Measure R process and some of the projects that we've done to date, including in the area of pedestrian safety and bike safety. So for that, I'm going to turn it over to Sarkis Organisian, our acting city engineer and deputy public works director, to do the presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Emrani. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, and members of city council. I'd like to introduce a few slides that highlight our public works department project planning and as it relates to our Measure R subregional program update tonight. The public works department consults our five-year capital improvement program for any project planning efforts. It's a dynamic document updated on a yearly basis. This document ensures that our projects meet council priorities, which were recently updated in March of 2022. It also ensures that projects are identified in our pavement management program to maintain our critical PCI levels as directed by the council, which was updated in 2021. It also factors in our yearly critical maintenance and operations projects, such as ADA improvement projects, sewer and storm drain repair projects. It also considers recommendations of various master plans, such as the pedestrian master plan, the bicycle transportation plan, and various community plans. It also considers other city department capital projects that have been planned, GWP electrical and water mainly. It also considers community concerns and requests that have been received throughout the years, such as new sidewalk requests, installation for new push buttons, and pothole and street repair requests. Afterwards, we identify and we secure or earmark funding that's available. And this is done in two ways, namely, through competitive programs, such as federal, state, and local programs, including Highway Safety Improvement Program, the Active Transportation Program, Proposition C, Measure W, and Measure M regional funds. And we also have a non-competitive program pool from federal and local funds, such as the Surface Transportation Program, Measure R Subregional, the topic of the evening tonight, Measure S, Senate Bill One, and Gas Tax. Once we've identified and procured the resources, we then begin implementation on the projects, of which we determine if we have in-house staffing resources to complete the work, or we should farm out the work for consultant design and construction management. A quick background on Measure R Subregional Funding. It was approved by voters in 2008 as a half-cent sales tax for LA County. It is a traffic congestion relief and transportation upgrade program. That is a nexus for the highway operation improvements, and that nexus is still applicable to new project requests. In 2021, in June of 2021, the Metro Board adopted the Highway Modernization Policy, which added some additional nexuses for highway operation improvements, such as reducing congestion and operational deficiencies by incorporating complete streets, thereby reducing the vehicle miles traveled. It's a local funding provided by Metro to the city of Glendale. Due to our location in the Arroyo Verdugo subregion and our population size, it is a 30-year lifespan, which sunsets in 2038, and we have approximately $100 million. Here is a overview of the project status for the various Measure R Subregional projects throughout the years. We have completed approximately $27 million in Measure R Subregional funded projects. We currently have about $20 million program projects in progress. We're asking to reprogram $1.2 million worth of projects for future purposes. We are asking for an additional programming request for an existing project of $3.5 million. And we're also asking for additional programming for brand-new projects for a total of $12 million. All in all, to date, our Measure R Subregional Fund status is approximately $64 million of the $98.5 million that I spoke about earlier. In regards to the new Measure R projects that I alluded to in the previous slide, that added up to about $12 million, we are asking for the North Glendale Avenue Improvements Project. This is located in downtown Glendale and will span between Broadway to North Verdugo Road. It's approximately $4 million in project cost. It is a critical downtown arterial roadway that serves major population centers. It's identified in our pavement management program to improve our roadway infrastructure and to maintain our critical PCI. It's an opportunity to improve safety for pedestrians and bicyclists at the intersections and the corridor. It's also identified in our pedestrian master plan as a short-term phase project, as project ID number eight. We're also asking for approximately $5 million in funding for the North Verdugo Road Improvements Project. This is a north Glendale arterial roadway that also serves major population centers. It's also identified in our pavement management program and is very critical to maintaining our PCI. It's an opportunity as well for pedestrian and bicycle safety improvements. It's identified in our bicycle transportation plan as a study corridor to address the speeding and roadway alignment concerns. It is also identified in our pedestrian master plan as a long-term phase project, as project ID number 51. And finally, we have our South Central Avenue Improvements Project from Colorado Street to Los Feliz Road. This is a south Glendale arterial roadway. Again, it is critical to maintaining our PCI. It serves both pedestrians and bicyclists at the intersections and throughout the corridor. It's identified in our bicycle transportation plan for bicycle infrastructure improvements, and it will provide a critical link between the newly constructed Glendale Train Station First Last Mile Project that was recently completed at the Glendale Train Station. It will link that up to downtown Glendale. Regarding our pedestrian master plan efforts, the Chapter Six of the Pedestrian Master Plan, which was adopted in 2021, has three phases to it. There's a short-term phase, which is projects that should be completed within the first five years. There's a medium-term phase for the next 10 years, and there's a long-term phase, which is the last 10 years of the plan. For the first five years, there's a total of 21 projects identified. We've completed 10 projects to date for a total of approximately $3.5 million, and we currently have five projects under design valued at around $4 million. For the medium-term phase, 22 projects are identified. We have completed 10 projects to date for a total of $6 million, and we currently have one project under design for $1 million. In the final long-term phase, we have 14 projects identified, six have been completed to date for $5.5 million, and two projects under design. The $33 million includes the $30 million active transportation bridge project that we have underway that is spanning over the LA River. So that completes an update, and I would be happy to answer any questions the council might have.
Councilmember Brotman, would you like to direct some of your questions to staff since this is my name.
Yeah, I mean, the reason I brought this up, and staff's aware of this because we've talked about it, is because when I see these things, and I see that there is a major focus on, and it says it right here in the report, enhancing traffic flows, reducing delays, improving vehicular access to and from the freeways. And those are all okay, but those are not what we've stated are our key priorities when it comes to roadway engineering. What we've said is our priority, and we said this in our offsite several months ago, is reducing speeds and improving traffic safety. That safety really is the top of our list, and I think the community has also spoken very loudly that this is a major concern. We want to be able to walk down our streets, to bike on our streets, and not be at risk of being hit and killed. And so what I would, so I see this, you know, $12 million here, kind of coming through as a consent item, and I think this is something we really need to spend more time considering because here, you know, this is a big slug of money, and I would like to see it go more towards implementing what's in our pedestrian plan. I know that one of the projects was called out in the pedestrian plan as a high priority project, the North Glendale. The other two projects, I don't think, rank that high in the pedestrian plan. And I would just like more consideration of how we're spending these dollars so that we're doing the most we possibly can to get those treatments in place to reduce speeding and improve pedestrian and bike safety. I really think that that should be our number-one goal, and I'm not sensing it when I read these reports. And I think I brought up something, was it last week or recently, anyway, another kind of similar thing where I'm seeing still what feels to me still like a primary focus on moving traffic as smoothly and quickly as possible. And I don't think that that's where we want to be anymore in Glendale. So that's, it's not really a question so much as a concern that this is coming up through as a consent item, and without having really dug into this to see, is this the best use of this $12 million?
Thank you, Councilmember Brotman. I'll allow the city manager to weigh in on this, although I will, before I allow him to speak, I will say that we spoke and agreed that most likely this should not have gone on consent. It should have been an action item for us to have a more robust discussion and understanding of the issues.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of city council. I take full responsibility for this having appeared on consent calendar. You are correct in asserting that this should have been as an action item. It's important enough that it garners further discussion. And moving forward, I have instructed staff to bring these media items that are of concern to the community and city council as action items, so provide an opportunity to further discussion. As far as council priorities concerned, again, you are correct. One of the priorities that was established in our work plan was improving safety of pedestrian and cyclists. The same token, council also established infrastructure as one of their priorities for this coming year, as we, as you have seen in the 39 items on the work plan. So staff will strive, moving forward, to include more elements, like Mr. Organisian mentioned, and other funding sources that we have available and we are pursuing to ensure that we include more projects in our programming to further our efforts in improving the safety of pedestrian and cyclists in the city.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember Najarian, and then Councilmember Devine. And we also have one caller.
I'll defer to Ms. Devine, if that would be fine.
Yes, Ms. Councilmember Devine.
Well, I just wanted to make a comment on the slide presentation. In all three of the projects, it was mentioned the opportunity to improve safety for pedestrian and bicyclists at intersections and corridors. So what exactly does that mean, if it's not what Mr. Brotman is talking about?
Councilmember Devine, that the improvements that are part of the three projects in relation to pedestrian and bicycle safety include numerous safety elements that will be included, such as bump outs, ADA curb ramp upgrades, high-visibility crosswalks, improving signing and striping in the vicinity. It also includes upgrades to the signals for pedestrian safety, upgrading push buttons, installing pedestrian refuge islands potentially, eliminating trap lanes and conflicting slip lane configurations, installing bicycle detection zones, and improving signal timing, including timing for safer pedestrian crossing. So all those are a very comprehensive set of pedestrian safety improvements and bicycle improvements.
Okay, that's okay, that's fine. Okay, I think that was it for me. And you, how long have these projects been in the pipeline, more or less?
More or less approximately about two to three years.
Yeah, that's what I thought. It's not like they just, we just pop them up and all of a sudden we're going to be doing this. This has been in the planning for many years and in the project pipeline for a couple of years, as most of our projects are. I mean, we have to have them shovel-ready when we submit for the funding, don't we? Yeah.
Absolutely. And if I may just add, as we showed on that last slide, although the pedestrian master plan was adopted recently, last year, 2021, as you've seen here, although we don't advertise it, maybe we should do a better job of advertising the projects that we do, we have completed, as Mr. Organisian mentioned, a total of 26 projects, which are specifically pedestrian-focused, and we have an additional eight projects that are underway. And the new projects that we're requesting funding under Measure R, two of them have already been identified as part of the pedestrian master plan. One of them is the short-term, which is the North Glendale Avenue Improvement Project, and the second one, the North Verdugo Road, is part of a long-term phase project. So we are actively, we've definitely heard the council and the direction that you've given us, and we're actively seeking to plan these projects and do improvements for pedestrians.
So these projects are not actually for achieving higher speeds or faster So these projects are not actually for achieving higher speeds or faster movement in the, you know, that's not the primary? I want to ask about the crosswalks, that's what I want to ask. Are they going to, the ones that are planned for these projects, do they have the flashing lights? Because those seem to be the most effective.
There are certain locations throughout each project corridor that are eligible for upgrades. If they have existing flashing beacons, they'll be upgraded to a newer standard flashing beacon, specifically with the mast arm, so they're more visible to motorists and for pedestrians crossing those crosswalks. We also have a priority pedestrian flashing beacon list, and if they're applicable to the projects, we make every effort to include them as part of that capital project.
Great, okay, good. Thank you, thank you both.
All right, any, Councilmember Najarian, and then I believe we do have a caller. Councilmember Najarian, are you there? Okay, well, we'll come back to him. Let's go to the caller. Maybe he was disconnected.
Herbert Milano, you have three minutes, Herbert. Go ahead.
Thank you very much. America's second members of the City Council. I have a couple of comments and also three questions. The comment that I want to make is that I noticed the sidewalk repair that is taking place now on Kenwood Street, and I truly appreciate that. And the first question has to do with if the city takes on any type of survey to determine how many elderly individuals live in a particular area as a way of prioritizing where the money goes. My inkling is that if there is a very large number of elderly or people on wheelchairs or people using walkers, that maybe that's the data that the city is using as a way of determining what parts of the city get priority. So that's my first question. My second question has to do with pavement condition. How many miles are there where the pavement condition index shows 70% or less? Anyway, I leave it at those two questions. I hope I can get some answers. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, member of City Council, I don't believe we have that information readily available, but we'll be more than happy, staff will be more than happy to provide that to Mr. Milano.
I'd like to make another comment.
Councilmember Brotman.
Yeah, I just want to say, you know, I know there are pedestrian and bike safety elements in here. I read the report, and I can see that. The question is really, where do we put our dollars? And are we putting them in the highest priority locations for making our streets safer? Right? And those should be the locations called out in the pedestrian plan. So to me, the pedestrian plan should be a real focal point for deciding where we want to do our other types of infrastructure investments so that we're killing multiple birds with one stone. Right? We're helping improve our payment conditions. At the same time, we are making progress on our pedestrian safety enhancements. So I would like to see them come together, and what struck me with this is the focus on increasing or enhancing traffic flow. That doesn't mean we're encouraging speeding, but enhancing traffic flow fundamentally means we are putting our dollars towards moving cars more smoothly, and that generally means more quickly. And we see that's where the speeding often occurs, is when we are getting people on and off of freeways. There's a lot of, there tends to be a lot of speeding in those environments. But that's it. I'm not saying that this doesn't have anything in it that's good as far as traffic safety is concerned. All I'm saying is I would have liked a more robust discussion around whether this is really the best place to be putting this $12 million, which isn't going to come around every day. So just want to be clear about that.
Are there any other comments? Seeing none, I'll just weigh in as well and say that certainly I agree with Councilmember Brotman in that anything we can do to enhance or put pedestrian safety at the forefront of whatever projects we're planning. We also do need to do certain improvements in areas, and I understand that this will address those issues, but in as much as when we move forward with future dollars, let us look at where can we slow down traffic? Where can we follow the pedestrian plan? Make sure that we're putting the dollars where they're going to have the greatest impact. And I believe, if I can, at the risk of oversimplifying Councilmember Brotman's comments, prioritize the pedestrian over the motorist. So with that, on this item, thank you for the report. Thank you, Mr. Organisian.
Mayor Kusakian.
Oh, we do have one more caller?
Mayor Kusakian, I do believe that Councilmember Najarian is trying to join us, and he does have comments.
Okay, let's just give him an opportunity to weigh in on this.
Councilmember Najarian, can you hear us now?
Well, on with technology. So while we wait for Councilmember Najarian to hopefully connect with us, is there anything to prevent us from putting this on the sideburner, Ms. Van Miden, going to council staff comments and then returning, take action on it?
You can do that. That's within your prerogative to pull this item over until you, and move to another item in terms of the business agenda.
I know that Councilmember Najarian wanted to speak on this, so out of respect for him and his desire to comment on this, let's move to item five, which is City Council and Staff Comments, and we will return to four B to hear Mr. Najarian's comments. And if at the conclusion of Council and Staff Comments, he has not reconnected with us, we'll just move forward with whatever action my colleagues so choose. Councilmember Brotman?
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Mayor Kusakian. Yes, I wanted to indulge you all in a little personal, I guess, personal information. And can you put this up here? Yes, this weekend, I had the opportunity to spend Sunday with my mom, who's there, who just turned 90 years old, and I know she listens to the council meetings because sometimes she texts me and tells me that my collar is out of order or I have some food in my teeth. So she's always keeping watch, but I just want to do a little "hey, Mom" shout-out and say, "Happy Birthday." There's another picture. She is 90, but you would not know it. She is just a ball of energy. She takes the train up from Orange County, where she lives, to the Union Station, the Pueblo de Los Angeles, if you know that area, and she's a docent there, so she takes people on tours. Then she takes the bus up to see me. She walks probably four, five miles a day. We did a walk on the beach. I was tired, she wasn't. But she is an amazing woman that has given us lots of love, raised three children, one a physics PhD, my older brother, a physician, my younger sister, and I'm the black sheep. I became a politician. But anyway, Happy Birthday, Mom, and hope we can do this again in another 10 years.
Happy Birthday to her.
Happy Birthday.
Happy Birthday. Important milestone. Councilmember Agajian, Councilmember Devine? All right, well, I'll just again reiterate that we do have the April 24 commemorative event on Sunday, 7:00 PM, at the Alex Theater. Hopefully, we'll see many of our community members turn out for that. As well as, I want to mention that the B-line will be free in honor of Earth Day on Friday. So this Friday, what? I hear, all right, Councilmember Najarian allows, perfect timing. I was just doing my best Najarian impression by saying that bus rides are free on the B-line because of Earth Day, and we're now in the City Council and Staff Comments portion, and we held off on voting on item four B so we could hear your comments on that. Do you have any council or staff comments or council comments that you'd like to say before we go back to item four B?
Yeah, council comments? I think I have a graphic which reminds people that MetroLink will be offering free rides through the entire system on this Friday, April 22, in honor of Earth Day and all of
All right.
Councilmember Najarian, can you hear us?
Is he still with us?
We're upgrading the ride.
All right, I think we caught as much of that as we possibly could. You may be in a place with spotty connection, but again, everyone rides free, Earth Day, April 22, on LA Metro lines, as well as on the Glendale B-line. Councilmember Najarian, are you still with us? Should have just taken action on item four B if we were going to have him for that period of time. Okay, well, hopefully, let's, hopefully, it's nothing that will alter the course of that vote, but let's move on to, there is, I'm sorry.
I just wanted to announce...
Oh, yes, absolutely.
...our first-day pop-up on the...
Your microphone.
Just wanted to announce the Earth Day pop-up since we're speaking about Earth Day.
Absolutely, yes.
And it's Saturday at the Artsach Paseo from 10:00 AM until 3:00. So stop by, and it's always fun to see what staff has put together for Earth Day. From 10 to 3, Artsach Paseo. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. So with that, let's return to item four B, and let's have an action on that. Would anyone like to make a motion?
I'll move the item. I'll move the item.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, moved by Councilmember Devine, and seconded by Councilmember Agajian. May we have a roll call?
Councilmember Agajian?
Yes.
Brotman?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Najarian? Mayor Kusakian?
Yes.
Yes. All right, thank you, Councilmember Najarian. We tried, we really tried.
But I'm sorry, guys, I'm remaining with the United States Senator voting Glendale. But are you talking? Measure R subregion funding, or are we done with that?
We just voted on it. You voted yes on the item, but we're, we'll entertain... We apologize.
So listen, I just want everyone to know that this is, was obtained and parcelled so many of the projects in the LA Basin, such as the Wilshire Subway, the Gold Line East Side Connection, the Crenshaw Line, we're getting these gobs of money. In certain regions, we're not getting funding. So this is a pool of money that supervised by...
Yeah. Well, hopefully, maybe next week when, well, I see he's still connected with us, so he must be in an area with spotty connection because, yeah, it's unfortunate. Well, Councilmember Najarian, we hear you loud and clear. We appreciate the work that you do in securing these funds through Metro and your experience in the arena of transportation. So item four B passed, actually five-zero because Councilmember Najarian did connect with us long enough to vote yes. Let's move on to the next item, community event announcements.
Next item would be community event announcement, three-minute portion. I don't have a caller at this point. Looks like there is a call coming in. Takes another 30 seconds.
Well, we can move on to adoption of ordinances, that's seven A, and then if that person is connected, we can go back.
It looks like the caller has dropped the call, and we'll call back during oral communications, five-minute portion.
Okay, all right. So will you please read item seven A into the record?
Seven would be adoption ordinance, seven A, Police Department regarding an urgency ordinance of the City of Glendale, of the City Council of the City of Glendale, California, approving the Glendale Police Department's specialized equipment use policy introduced by Councilmember Agajian on April 12, 2022.
Great. Is there any discussion on this item before it's introduced, or we have a motion and a second to move for adoption? Councilmember Brotman?
Oh, no, I was, you introduced it, so Councilmember Agajian should...
I think if Police Department needs this equipment, so we have to go along with it. They wanted it. This is military equipment, to use the military equipment. And I remember, this was years ago in North Hollywood, I guess, a few people, they got into a bank, if I'm not wrong, and the police got a call, and they went there, and they overpowered by this, two, three people who, they became with machine guns and other type of guns. I mean, I cannot ask the Police Department to go and defend ourselves or our banks and other, whatever we have, and when they can overpower them. So if they say they need it, so I believe armed personnel carriers, which at that day, I vividly, I remember, I was watching what's going on on TV in order to report it a little bit afterward, I got on TV and reporting what's going on in there. So I cannot ask any police officer to go forward, knowing well they have wives, or they have husbands, kids, father and mother, and go put them in danger without providing them with proper protection. So that's why I thought this is a good way of protecting our Police Department, so that's why I was willing to introduce this item. Thank you.
Seconded.
So moved by Councilmember Agajian, seconded by Councilmember Devine. Councilmember Brotman, you had a call?
I was just going to make a comment, and we discussed this last week. I think the bill that this is coming out of, there was a, was it an Assembly Bill or a Senate Bill? I forget what, an Assembly Bill? That this is coming out of, I think the intent was, based on what I understand, it wasn't to question whether we should or shouldn't have this type of equipment in our police force, but it was really to allow the public to understand more clearly what we are, what kind of inventory we're holding, how it's being used, how it, whether and how it's been used in the past, what are the rules for operating it, and, you know, how much are we spending on it and that kind of thing? It was all about public visibility and public understanding of what our Police Departments are doing with this kind of equipment. And so my only frustration, and I expressed it last time, is that I wish that we had had the time to be able to hold a public meeting to really lay this out, and we didn't. So, and I am told that the legislature really gave us very little time to put the inventory together and to put the policy together, and we've been scrambling, and other agencies have been scrambling equally to get in before the deadline, so I accept that, and I'm happy to go forward with this. But I do understand that we've committed to doing a good, strong, robust, public outreach effort prior to the one-year anniversary, I guess, when we have to do a, we do an annual report on this, is that right? Yeah, so, you know, I'm looking forward to that because that really was the purpose of this legislation, and we really need to respect that objective.
Thank you. There was a motion and a second. May we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Agajian?
Yes.
Brotman?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Najarian? And Mayor Kusakian?
Yes. What is next?
Next would be eight action items, eight, Public Works, regarding acceptance of fiscal year 2021, 2022 Low Carbon Transit Operations Program, LCTOP, grant funds for electric bus charging infrastructure. One, motion approving the acceptance of grant funds in the amount of $138,788 from the California Department of Transportation. Four, the 2021, 2022 Low Carbon Transit Operations Program, and authorizing the city manager designated to execute all agreements, certifications, and documents necessary to accept, implement the grant funds. Two, resolution authorizing the execution of the certification and assurances, and authorize agent forms for the Low Carbon Transit Operations Program for the following project, electric bus charging infrastructure.
All right, thank you. Thank you. City Manager Galanian?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, member of City Council. This is one of those great items that we are pleased to bring forward to council because it falls in alignment, complete alignment, with one of council's priorities of sustainability and infrastructure improvement. And I'll turn it over to Mr. Imroni, Director of Public Works, for a brief presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Galanian. Again, good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of City Council. This is a part of our plan for our transit fleet, to electrify our overall transit fleet. We have plans to purchase five electric buses, which the council approved back in January. And this money that we're going to get from the LCTOP grant is going to go towards purchasing three chargers for those five electric buses. So we're pleased to bring this before your council, and we respectfully ask for you to accept a grant.
I am happy to move this item. Very excited. Good.
Second.
All right. Thank you very much. May we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Ogajian?
Yes.
Brotman?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Najarian? And Merrick Socken?
Next item, please.
Next item would be eight B, Glendale Water and Power, regarding various Grayson Power Plant On-Call Maintenance Contracts. One, resolution dispensing with further competitive bidding and authorizing the city manager or his designee to execute an amendment to contract number 8000616 with ARB Incorporated to increase the not-to-exceed by an additional $250,000 and extend the term by two years. Two, resolution dispensing with further competitive bidding and authorizing the city manager or his designee to execute an amendment to contract number 8000832 with Ethos Energy Field Services LLC to increase the not-to-exceed by an additional $20,000 and extend the term by two years. Three, resolution dispensing with further competitive bidding and authorizing the city manager or his designee to execute an amendment to contract number 8000803 with Core Ray Painting Corporation to increase the not-to-exceed by an additional $150,000 and extend the term by two years.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Galanian?
Yes, thank you, Merrick Socken, member of City Council. Mr. Mark Young, our General Manager of Water and Power, will brief you on this presentation shortly. This is essentially a request to extend three contracts with three existing contractors that we have for on-call services, as-needed on-call services for the maintenance of the Grayson Power Plant. Young?
Thank you, Mr. Galanian, members of council. Mark Young, General Manager, GWP. Like the city manager indicated, this is for maintenance contract for Grayson. The first one is with ARB. ARB is basically a company that repairs large infrastructure. So if we have a tube leak in our boilers, they would come in and they would fix the tube leak. They also do any other water and steam piping repairs, such as superheater tubes and such. They also will use to install and remove gas turbines when we need to have them fixed. The second contract is the Ethos Energy. Ethos Energy is a balance of plant maintenance and field services for any rotating equipment at Grayson, as well as any water department's off-site pumping facilities. Rotating equipment would include pumps and motors, so when there's any problems with these, they either do it in the field, or our staff removes the items and takes it to Ethos for repair. The third item is Core Ray Painting. This is an industrial painting service, and it sounds a little ironic that we would have a painting service on the Grayson facility, but they would, we need to maintain adequate painting so that we don't have any rust in certain areas, and they would be focusing on number nine unit, and regardless of what direction that council gives with regard to the Grayson repower, number nine would still be there, so we would need to continue to use Core Ray Painting to maintain the unit stack. These are two-year contracts. We want to have these in place so that if there was any repairs that were needed for the summer months, we would have this in place, and we would be able to expedite repairs and get these units back in service so that we can supply energy during the summer months.
Are there any questions?
Just a comment, we need this for reliability, right, to ensure that we have power?
Yes, ma'am.
And then near future and distant future. Thank you.
Now, you move the item.
Second?
Moved by Councilmember Ogajian, and seconded by Councilmember Devine. Are there any callers on this item?
There are no callers for this item.
With that, let us have a roll call, please.
Councilmember Ogajian?
Yes.
Brotman?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Councilmember Najarian?
Yes.
Wow.
He's back.
Merrick Socken?
Yes. The next item is a holdover from last week. It is a report for consideration of a public monument in recognition of the Armenian genocide. This is not going to be considered tonight. We're taking this off calendar. Unfortunately, the agenda was published after we made that decision. There are some discussions happening with the proposers of the monument and some other bodies that we may have updates on in the future, but for the time being, we will not be addressing this in the immediate future of this council. So what is next, Mr. Clerk?
Next item is oral communication. Discussion is limited to items, not a part of this agenda. Council may question or respond. To the Speaker, there will be no debate or decision. The city manager may refer the matter to their appropriate department for investigation and report. At this time, I don't have any callers. Mayor, would you like to wait about 30 seconds?
I know that there was one person who was trying to connect with us, so we will wait for 30 seconds. Maybe play the Jeopardy song as we wait.
La Crescenta is also having a celebration at the park on Saturday as well. It's a country-
Was it their country fair?
Yes.
All right, the country fair is back, that's right.
So if you're able to get up there, that should be fun as well. Yeah.
I feel like events are more exciting now that people are actually attending and they're in person, so.
Well, I think we look at them with more joy than we did before.
Or it's that, you're right. It could be that. Yes, this, in La Crescenta Park?
Yes, it is.
In La Crescenta?
On Saturday, yes.
On Saturday.
Mm-hmm.
Crescenta Valley Park.
Crescenta Valley Park.
Yes. All right. Do we, has our caller connected with us again?
Mayor, we do have a caller. We're waiting until we get that information.
Okay. All right. Let us go to the phones.
Edwin, you have five minutes. Go ahead.
Hi, good evening, City Councilmembers. How are you guys doing today?
Hello, Edwin.
My name is Edwin.
We're well, thank you. Go ahead.
Yes, um, councilmembers, I just wanted to say that tomorrow, I just want to bring it to your attention, tomorrow is April 20th, and, and tomorrow is 4/20 Day, and it's Marijuana Day. Just wanted to let you guys know that. Now, I remember former Mayor, Mayor Devine said that medical marijuana dispensaries would be a topic of discussion for a different time. I just wanted to ask, when, is that going to be a topic of discussion to talk about, to be added to the agenda? Because the idea that I'd like to talk about is keeping the revenue here in the City of Glendale, so the revenue can be spent here in the City of Glendale. Now, my other thing I wanted to talk about is, now, I called last week regarding clean energy. Now, city, the city manager said that wind power, windmills are not part of the, part of the plans to install, but I'd like to see if you guys can add wind power, power, wind power generating windmills installed in the City of Glendale. That's the thing I would like to see, if you guys can amend and add to the agenda. Couple other things that I wanted to mention is that I know this is a day that we don't want to remember, especially for schoolteachers and students. I just wanted to bring it to your attention that tomorrow is the 22nd anniversary of the Columbine shooting that happened in Colorado, and it happened on April 20th, 1999. And these two shooters committed the painless crimes because they were bullied. And that's something that nobody wants to remember, and bullying's a big problem. What's even crazy is that April 20th is Adolf Hitler's birthday, and I cannot believe that it, that shooting happened on the same day of Adolf Hitler's birthday. And this is something we do not want to remember. But anyways, that's all I have to say. Thank you for taking my call.
Thank you for calling in.
Bye.
Take care. Any other callers?
Mayor, I don't have any callers at this time. No callers.
Seeing there, we do have new business.
We do? Do you want me to do it now?
Yes, please.
Okay, I'd like to move, authorizing, make a motion, authorizing the city attorney to file a petition for writ of mandate challenging the Superior Court's denial of the city's motion for summary judgment in the matter of Murphy versus the City of Glendale, Los Angeles Superior Court, case number 2STCV29677.
Is there a second?
Second.
May we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Ogajian?
Yes.
Brotman?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Najarian? Councilmember Najarian? And Merrick Socken?
Yes. We have nothing else to discuss. We are at the end of the meeting.
Move to adjourn.
And nobody will need to-
We are adjourned, thank you. Good night.
Who would that be?
And good luck.
Sounds like a bird.
That was challenged.
Sounds like a bird.